All right. Good afternoon. Welcome to the Thurston County Board of County Commissioners, Commissioners' check-in for Wednesday, September 3rd, 2025. It's 1:36 PM. My name is Ty Menter, Chair of the Board. Vice Chair Fornia will be joining us in some minutes. Commissioner Caroline Amieta on my left, Commissioner Emily Claus to her left, and Commissioner Grant online. We have County Manager Leonard Hernandez, Assistant County Managers Jennifer Walker and Josh Cummings, folks from our budget team for one of our agenda items today. The meeting is not livestreamed but recorded and will be posted in 24 hours. Written public comment may be received up to two hours in advance of the meeting and distributed to the board. Action may be taken at this meeting. First up in the agenda is budget update. County manager.
Thanks so much, Chair and Commissioners. Start by thanking the budget team for their hard work, putting these things together. We actually have two presentations, one that we'll be going through in detail, and one that's more for your background. They're both included in your packet and these were shared with you as well. I do want to highlight the budget update that's called "All Funding Sources by Department", and if actually, Amy, you could bring that one up real quick. We're not gonna... There you go. We're not gonna go through this presentation now was because it's more developed for the Commissioners' background. These are the questions that were asked in our last presentation. Most of our conversations, if not all of them, have been focused on the general fund. But there have been some questions about what are the other funds associated with departments? And if we scroll through a couple of slides, we'll just show you. If you go to slide five, there we go. It's fine. Slide six. I want to thank the budget team for working through the data and information to present this graphically, that they have the different offices and departments outlined with their funding source contributions. I think that's something in response to the Commissioners' request from our last meeting to want to see this. The reason we're not going to go over it in detail is because each department has a different breakout, and this is more just reference material for your background so that you can see which offices have more of a general fund component versus not, and then what the other funding sources are. As you look through this information, if you have any questions about it, please don't hesitate to reach out to Summer, and we'd be happy to sit down and talk it through. But again, just wanted to thank the team's responsiveness to the Commissioners' request and the amount of time that it took to put this kind of information together. We can go ahead and scroll back over to the other presentation.
Real quick before you leave, yeah, on slide four, which is kind of the one that I think responsive to what I was asking. And I get like a big...
Sure.
At some point, just because all those little squares and colors are...
Do you want it on the plotter?
Whatever, whatever you can do easily would help me.
Yeah, we'll break it out.
Get that a little better, because that's really an interesting one.
Okay, we'll do that for all the Commissioners. We'll get you a big blow-up of it.
Thank you.
Yeah, you know, I think it was Summer mentioned that the limitations of PowerPoint and that, you know, sometimes it's...
These are all good, these...
Oh, yeah, we just, we know that there are some tough decisions ahead for Commissioners, and there's information that you all need to make those decisions. So our commitment is to get you that information, and I believe the budget team has been extremely responsive.
Commissioner Grant?
Just to kind of echo that, I would love to see, and I'm kind of toggling back and forth here, but to the PowerPoint, but I'm wondering if I can get the ones that are not graphs in Excel? If we could get a file with just a few of those that are in Excel with the... I'm trying to figure out the slide number, just a second. It would be slide... Gosh. Sorry, just one second here. Slide number six and slide number 13 and 14.
Slide six, thirteen and...
Fourteen, yeah. And they can literally just be new tabs in a separate file, you know, something like that. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, we'll definitely do that, Commissioner, and we'll send that out to all the Commissioners.
Okay.
Give us one second to make a note of that. Amy, you can go ahead and bring up the other presentation. I can go to the next slide. So Commissioners, here's what we're accomplishing today. Today is just information. Next slide, please.
Oh, I'm sorry.
You have the controls. What we'll look to do is provide this information, and a board would recommend that next week we put on one of the... Does that propose motion for 2025? I understand the conversation last time, we wanted to go through this presentation first, see if there's any questions or additional information needed before we actually get there. So it's that we wanted to frame... The last recommendation was, had a lot of different things going on in it, and this motion we'd want the board to consider for next week is similar to what they took action in '26 and '27 by a biennial build budget, which is not to add anything new to the '25 current budget, which is positions or reclassifications that would impact the general fund. That doesn't mean that departments can't continue to spend their 2025 budget, and that's the distinction that we want with what we would propose for next week. Apartment guidance, the reduction targets have been provided to departments for planning and implementation. The next step would be discussions with the board on impacts of those reductions to offices and departments. And we'd look to try to accomplish that on or around September 17th. We have a pretty tight timeframe where we have to move things along to get them loaded into the budget system and then be ready to have that information prepared for the board and public, and then meet our statutory requirements or deadlines to get it all approved by, I think it's early December, if that's correct. A lot of technical timelines in between now and then. We can go to the next slide. One of the things we also wanted to highlight in this presentation, because I know there's been some questions, good questions asked about it, are what's the budget office using when we develop the forecast? I want to thank our budget manager and the team because they really have expanded what tools they're using. A forecast should never just be something someone comes up with. So they look at historical financial data in current actuals. They look at year-over-year financial trends, sales and property tax performance metrics, program-level revenue and expenditure assumptions, known and potential budget impacts. Sometimes things are being discussed in executive session that we know could have a financial impact. They'll program that in as it starts to look like it's very possible that it hits the general fund. And then here's, I think, a really important component when we're looking at, how are we informing the out-years? State economic indicators and forecasts such as the monthly economic and revenue update and the Economic and Revenue Forecast Council, the Quarterly Economic and Revenue Forecast Publication, the Annual Economic Climate Study, and the Washington Monthly Economic Report Office of Financial Management Forecasting and Research Division. Those, with those tools, they chart the course for what the trends are headed and looking like in the future. Want to pause? See if there are any questions? All right, next slide, please.
I do have to head out for an appointment, so I'm gonna hop on the team's call, and I'm gonna not be driving. I have a ride.
Okay. And if anything, if you'd like any additional information, just let us know.
Thank you so much. I appreciate it.
Yep. This is a trend that we've shown you in the past. Nothing has really changed from this. I'm going to the next slide. This is the deficit numbers that we're tracking right now, the actuals. Of course, being what that describes, this is dollars that we've actually have known that are in, and then the estimated 2025, if we're working to take that. The general fund revenue comparison, I think this was a helpful slide that showed the different revenue sources, property tax, sales tax, and other. And, you know, I think that in a past presentation, we might have said that there's been no growth, and that's actually not accurate, but there's been such little growth that what we're describing is revenues have been pretty much flat. Now, some of the categories you see a jump, like I want to point out, in '23 to '24, that's a significant jump of about eight million. But the reason for that jump was because of the interest accrued on the bond. And that's not revenue that we are anticipating having year after year as the county's making plans, which it has to, to spend that bond down. And so when you look at the other revenue sources from 2020 to what we're projecting, those growth patterns, while they are positive, they're just not keeping track with the expenditures. Same with sales tax.
Commissioner Grant, real quick?
Yeah, absolutely.
Commissioner Grant, but... You're on mute.
Yeah, hey, guys. So on this slide, and I want to say, first of all, thank you for providing this slide. This is another really helpful way to kind of break things out. I am interested in the breakout of, like, you have a roll-up of all other, and I was hoping at some point that we would see the all-other listed as individual line items. So criminal justice and public safety is a line item, you know, timber excise taxes is a line item, just to kind of be able... This for me will help me because then I know that if there were changes in house bill, you know, different house bills, or if we're getting funding, you know, for specific things, like, you know, that are specific to timber or license and permit fees, I would be able to say to myself, you know, this is the bucket that's gonna go up, and maybe the other buckets could go down. So I'm just hoping maybe I can get this broken down into the detail.
Yeah, we can break out the detail. Absolutely, Commissioner. I also wanted to point out that in this environment, there's also still the road fund transfer, which we can't lose sight of that because in the out-years, the road fund is experiencing a deficit of its own. And that's something that we plan to bring to the board on a separate presentation. So yes, to Commissioner Grant's request, we can definitely do the breakout, and we'll probably send that to each Commissioner as well. But I thought that staff did a good job of just showing the revenue. Again, a more accurate portrayal is while there is growth, the growth isn't keeping pace with the expenses. Right, next slide? This is a, the next couple of slides, I think, show, it's a specific zoom in to each of the revenue sources. Summer, do you want to walk us through?
Sure. This is the property tax year-over-year comparison for the same timeframe referenced in the prior slide from 2020 through 2027 as estimates. And you can see that we have been receiving increases annually in property tax, but the rate of growth is, has been a little bit, we'll say erratic, if you will. If we remove the outliers of the 9% growth in 2024 and the negative growth factor in '23, we're still averaging historically and in the future approximately 3% in growth. There is a 1% limitation to the amount of the levy dollars received by the county. We can exceed that amount through allowable revenue growth in new construction, straight state-assess property, and property improvements.
Just possibly, I think there's a question from the Commissioner.
Commissioner Grant?
You're on mute.
Yeah, I was wondering here, I just wanted to bring this up, that for '26 and '27, I want to flag that, you know, we recently were presented with an annexation discussion from Lacey. And I am interested in understanding how this will affect our property tax and feel like we should be, you know, if that was something we were moving towards, what that would look like, if it'll go down overall, that kind of thing. So I'm just hoping we could add that into the assumptions. I mean, you could have a slide with or without it, but that's something I'm hoping we can understand a little more about, too.
That's a great question, Commissioner Grant. And I think that as the board gave direction for, we're working with the city of Lacey, but to just a quick high-level overview, the annexation will more affect the sales tax than it would the property tax per se. But we'll be working with the city of Lacey on the report they provided, and if we can get those data from the report they already had, then we can easily provide that.
Yelm as well, just the yelm.
Yes, you're right.
Yeah, yeah.
So we'll definitely put those on the radar and determine if we need additional analysis as part of that process. I know that the city manager of Lacey suggested a partnership in analyzing at a deeper level the effects of the annexation and that we could partner together on some type of consultant for that.
That would be useful because I would say that we've done multiple annexations over the last seven years, but the one that's being proposed now is the most...
Significant.
Well, significant and just kind of like, like the other ones were like solving a problem, doing it island, like they had a targeted and pretty justifiable basis. This is more just general annexation. There's nothing really, other than the sales tax drive. That's really what's driving it, the sales tax credit. But from an annexation standpoint, you know, there's not... This one's a little different, you know? So like, we never really got into these weeds because there was always sort of an overriding justification for the others. This one, I think it would be nice for the board to understand how a large annexation like this affects us tax-revenue-wise.
And some of that information we may have available, but some of it we may need to do additional analysis and research on.
I believe the assessor would, you know, because they're constantly going through these figures. So I believe they would, I mean, the formula for like property tax assessments is very complicated in itself. And so, I don't know, I just...
We'll definitely work with the assessor.
Summer, before you go off this slide, you know, this only goes back to 2021, but is it fair to say, because, I mean, with the 1% cap and the new construction, you know, and the other things that are allowable beyond the cap, is it fair that like 3% is kind of a, is kind of a standard property tax? And then we see this like fluctuation on '22 to '24, but it seems to me like 3% would be kind of what you'd normally expect.
That is what I have seen as being like a historical average.
And that, and that, I would think, would fluctuate less frequently than sales tax.
But that's an important point because if you look at what the growth pattern shows, it kind of helps us understand what we can expect from this revenue source.
And then my next question would be, is that the, like, when you're building our projection, are you, is 3% the number you're using to, for property tax growth?
That is the placeholder figure for the out-years.
Yep, okay, that's right. That makes sense.
So then it takes any mystery out of it, because you can see the trend there. Or the next slide.
Can I, can I just ask really quick, what was the outlier in 2023 that made it nine?
There was a, the assessed valuation went up significantly, I believe it was. And there may have been a, I think there was a clawback of some road levy shift, but I'd have to look to give you the exact information. I'm happy to put that in an email.
That's okay. I mean, that's enough information. I just was out of curiosity. No, no, no need to go into more. Thank you.
Leave it to sales tax. Somebody want to walk us through?
Sure. So this is a similar timeframe comparison of sales tax year-over-year. And you can see that the revenue actuals and projected are in the blue columns, and then the percentage of growth is in the green line. Just as a reminder to everyone here that in 2021, we received the final round of COVID stimulus payments. So there was quite a bit of sales tax revenue coming in at an increased amount over the 21, 22-year periods. In '22, the sales tax bill were strong, and '23 revenues declined. And according to all of our trusted economic publications, that was the first time outside of a recession, and it was due to the tapering stimulus and rising inflation costs in that particular year. '24, we saw modest recovery, but the growth was still very slow and low. We're seeing the same for 2025. And so taking into consideration all of the resources that I utilize and looking at the way things are trending, I'm not anticipating we would collect more than 1.5% over the next two years. Of course, I'm happy to come back and revise those estimates if sales tax is performing better. And I'd like to remind the board that when we talk about sales tax coming in low, that the estimates that were set for this biennial period was 5%. So if we estimated our sales tax revenue at 5% and we're actually realizing 1.5%, that's a pretty significant drop in what our general sales tax revenues are.
Commissioner Grant?
Thank you. Thank you. On that note, I just kind of wanted to add. So in 2022, it was, the percentage that Robin put it at was at 5%. 2023, I believe she put it at that same 5%, and that's the first time where it came in as low as it did. And then in 2024, she put it in at 2.5. And I remember hearing back a lot of the pushback from different, how she was being actually very conservative in that 2.5 estimate, and she was like, well, this is what we're hearing, this is, you know, just, and just based on that drop. And so, I mean, I think that's where we had a change in management, where it went back to that 5%. But, you know, I just remember that 2.5 and how, you know, we were working under that assumption of revenue coming in and the fact that it hasn't even come in at that. And those were the conservative, very conservative estimates back in 2024 and 2025.
Commissioner Grant?
You're on mute.
Gosh, I'm back home now. Sorry, you guys, I'm on my computer. But the, thanks for that context from me, Caroline, I appreciate that. I was actually gonna ask kind of the same thing, something similar around, like, where did we get the 5%? Like, when we were, you know, estimating back in '22, '23? I guess part of me is curious about what 2009 to 2020 looked like, just out of, you know, and whether or not it was running at 5%.
There's a table that's, yeah, which...
The one that starts at 93?
Yeah, Robin used to have this table. You can see it. So it's easy to...
Oh, that's in the budget book, isn't it? I think I've seen, I'll look at it. I'll look at it. I have it. Okay, all right, great. Thank you.
For the sake of this context, from 2020 to 2022, extreme uncertainty in the economy. Global pandemic, right? Global pandemic, unprecedented amount of stimulus money infused into the economy nationwide. Things shot up, start coming down, and then the board's under, and staff, under tremendous amount of pressure not to be overly conservative with an all-time-high fund balance that you're working through. So what we're showing is the trend, but the context of from 2020 to 2022, there's a lot of moving parts and a lot of things that were hard for folks to figure out because you can see the decline, 15%, 7.82, down to 1.12. It ultimately, the economy corrected itself, and now it's showing a trend for the last three years. And so it's that trend that we're taking forward. We're not trying to be overly conservative, but with the fact that our fund balance has taken such a hit, we don't have a lot of options to err on the side of being optimistic and then us not realizing that. Next slide? Can you walk us through the all-other general fund?
Sure. So this is the assumptions, or I'm sorry, year-over-year performance of all other general fund revenues between the same time period. These sources include gambling tax, criminal justice and public safety, revenue sharing, leasehold timber excise tax licensing and permitting, intergovernmental revenues and charges for goods and services. There are also some revenues that come in for fines and penalties, investment earnings, which we discussed driving up revenues in 2024, and then lease revenues, rebates, miscellaneous other items. You can see that we're making assumptions in 2024 and forward that these increases were driven by the sale, shared sales tax revenues and leasehold excise taxes and gambling tax coming in high. Significant growth came in on miscellaneous revenues primarily because of the interest earned on the 2022 bond proceeds that have been held. In our future years, we're looking at a little bit of, I guess, the growth factor is a little bit, for lack of a better word, crazy, right? I'm estimating that we're gonna go down in 2025, stripping out the revenues earned from interest and some other things, and then we'll come back and stabilize at about 2% in '26 and '27. I think beyond that, the only thing is the big growth in '24, and that is primarily because of the interest earned.
And the reason for the '25 correction is because we don't anticipate the same level of interest in 2025. Otherwise, if you take out the '24 exception, then there's just a modest growth from '23 to '25. Still, I think that gives you an idea of where the budget team is looking to put the forecast at. And again, trying to find that balance based on a last couple of years, which has been pretty unpredictable.
I would say that in this particular category, there are many different items that feed into it, and so they are all performing differently depending on what is happening either in the, within the county or with sales tax and things like that. So this is kind of the really erratic outlier. It's hard to pinpoint.
Next few slides that you've seen before, this is the general funds breakout by department. Then we have the all-other funds that we'll get you a bigger copy of so that you can see the detail of that. Let me move to the next slide.
Sure. This is just a culmination of all funds, including the general fund. So it is basically taking the prior two slides, putting it into one, and this shows you the 2025 budget for all of the funds held by the county.
And the dark blue, just so, just so we know, is what? Chair?
No, that's the general fund.
It's what?
General fund.
The general fund. Let's go back and see. So your general fund is 146, about 147 million.
Yeah.
And then total all-other funds is 530, and then we mash them together, it's 677 million.
So this isn't by department, this is county-wide?
This is county-wide, all funds, including general.
Because I was interested in the total, like, the department budgets as a percentage of the total budget, including all of the funds, not just the general.
Yep, this one is the general fund for all of the general fund, I guess you could say recipients or participants. This is all other funds, not including general fund. And then this is addressing the requests that came in the last presentation.
So I guess...
That's funds, not department.
So, yeah, I think what Commissioner Menter is asking for, like, the, all these little different bubbles with the assessor, the auditors, for it to be just on one and for us to kind of see that split.
It could be a list. Doesn't, in fact, a pie chart is not the best way to do it.
Yep, this is it. So at the bottom, there's a list, and it shows you all of the funds, the amount of their appropriations, their budgets, and then it's reflected in the pie chart.
We'll break it out in a bigger, well, actually, what we'll do for you is take that and just put it in an Excel sheet with minus the chart.
Yeah, but these are all just listed as funds.
Yeah, you're looking for departments. Those departments have...
I want to know who gets the most of the budget of the county. The budget's 420 million. What department gets the most of that? I don't care what, I don't care what fund it's coming from.
God, we can do that for you.
Yeah, and I, if you flip back one, one slide, two slides maybe, to the original one, back one more. Um, yeah, I I definitely know that was it, that one. So this this Excel spreadsheet that's kind of cut and put into this, I mean, I'm very interested in just seeing all of those funds to the right of the five million uh as in columns. And then um and then them broken out, you know, how much of, you know, I would like to be able to see of the public safety tax. How much do does it go to law? How many, how much goes to corrections? How much goes to public health? That that kind of thing. And so um I I think I'm echoing what they're saying too, but just um it would be.
Well, yeah, I think we're tracking, but what um Assistant County Manager Jennifer Walker mentioned, she's asking for the public safety sales tax. He's asking for just to break out based on percentage.
Of the total budget, the six hundred and seventy seven million.
I think that Commissioner Grant is just, I think she's asking for like all the, you know, I think she used public safety's tax as a different example. I think.
All of those fund sources that are on the next two pages.
So.
Yeah.
The breakout by departments and see what how how much departments get in total with general funds and all other ones.
That's what's in here.
That's what this presentation is.
E- except for this presentation doesn't show. So if you go to um sheriff's programs, share or let's see, hold on, public so, oh, I see what you're saying.
Yeah, the the separate presentation um has like on the sheriff's office, has it broken out by revenue?
But they think what we're looking for is this slide, which is the general fund slide by department with all funds by department.
Okay, yeah, that's exactly. Yes, thank you. Yes.
I don't know if you could actually see that. I don't.
Commissioner Grant. Well, treat treatment sales tax, I mean, this good one would be the treatment sales tax is a really good example, like if that was a column and it would be broken down into four or five of the different areas that we fund. And then um and then then the twelve billion at the very bottom is a total. That's kind of where how my brain works. Um, so I'm hoping I could get that.
Can I restate?
Just checking with Summer. Summer, are you tracking with?
I I'm not quite sure, but Jennifer says she understands. So if we need to revisit the recording, I will.
All right, and we can always follow up with um individual commissioners, just to make sure we're getting what's needed. Next slide is um was an overview of the general fund targets that we discussed last time. This slide is the this is a great overview because I know there's been some discussion about available fund balance. And what this slide does is it just shows with overview of how the fun funds that are available, which we call fund balance. The availability of funds, how it moves in, how it changes from month to month. So because the counties doesn't receive consistent revenue, there are infusions of property tax, there's different times that uh receipts hit, expenditures hit. There's an ebb and flow of available funds. But when we look at this layout for twenty twenty six, uh, on the chart, you'll see monthly fund balance. And if you look at March, you can see that it goes down to uh just above one million. Then in April, it's projected to pop up to nineteen. And so what the team has to track in an environment where our available funds is pretty limited, we have to make sure we have enough cash on hand to actually pay the bills. It's a consideration as we're as we're looking at how do we adjust in twenty twenty six and make sure that we have enough cash on hand. I'm gonna pause here because I see a question.
Yeah, um. Yeah, I this is a I I may be more of a question for Carolina and Ty um in historical, but or or all of you, I guess. Um, but uh for me, in and in previous roles, um, you know, we would call this a reserve, you know, the fund balance would be a reserve. Um, and generally, um, in agencies or in um, we we have like a an ordinance or something written out that would say we must have six months of operating expenses at the minimum in our fund balance at every time, like or what we or a reserve, you know, that you would have you know, twice the amount of operating cost. Um, and I'm just wondering if we've ever done that and um is that something in anyone's ever discussed?
Yeah, Commissioner. I was gonna say, uh, I went over this, I think it was last week, but when the when I joined the board, there wasn't anything like that. There was a there was a, we tried to keep, we called it the red line, and it was like ten million or twelve million, something like that. That was kind of to meet cash flow, basic needs, and we tried and 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 the board, to my estimation before I got here, just tried to stay above that line, and that was kind of it. And then we implemented the budget policy that was distributed, which basically we that's that set that upper line, which is a two month operating reserve, which we were told was kind of jet best practices to have in the fund balance. So we basically set that line. And i- if you read the way it's written, you'll see that it was pre-COVID. So it basically says, we will strive to attain that by twenty twenty three, because we thought it was gonna be a long and arduous, difficult uh stair step to get up to that two month fund reserve. Well, like a few months after we passed that policy, COVID happened and relief money came and there was, you know, lost revenue. Basically, we were, we exceeded it, you know, like really quickly without without having to do that slow climb. So so the way it's written was, it says after twenty twenty three, if we're if we're below the the two month line, and this is the first year we have been below, then we have to balance the budget. Um, so that was a way of trying to um basically articulate that the goal is to be at a two month reserve, which is best practice, and we're not allowed to, we're not allowed to pass an unbalanced budget if we're not there. The last three years before this year, we've been well above that line. So we, you know, it that that didn't come into play, but this year, that's why I wanted it to be re-discussed and redistributed, because this is the first year I've been on the board that that policy actually, it was has been triggered. Uh, and it's been so fast that the that the fund balance dropped that it's, you know, it makes it seem like, how did this happen so fast? But that's the answer to your question is that's the history of the board's discussion on that, and that that we we do have a stated goal of having a two month operating reserve. It's not mandatory, but the the only mandatory thing that we put on ourselves is to have a balanced budget if we're below that target, which we are right now.
Right. So so then I I just want to ask then, um, so shouldn't this chart then say fund balance needs two months? Because in reality, if we have something written out that says we need two months of operating costs, it should be we should always have a fund balance of twenty million dollars.
Yeah, well, this chart isn't showing you what we should have. This chart is tracking what our projections are, and we're what we're flagging for you in March, we dipped dangerously low there.
Right, right. Okay.
And the resolution that Commissioner Mensah is referring to is Resolution one five nine three two. Um, and I do believe that it's it's the continuation, the continued development of those fiscal policies through resolution that can help us continue to establish, Commissioner Grant, what you're saying is things that would help us weather the ebbs and flows of what is government government finance. So the development of a general purpose reserve, for example, we know the board established a rainy day fund, has funded it to four million. The board has been making steps in the last several years to do some of these things. We think there's more work to be done in some of those key areas. I think that when we're looking at the deficit, we're looking at focusing on just the fund balance could be, um, well, it is an important aspect. It it really is also about the um discrepancy between revenues and expenditures. And we can go to the next one. This is again, items that we've discussed. Um, in short, reducing expenditures, identifying new revenue sources, which the board is um giving us direction to explore a couple of different revenue sources. Projected budget requirements by year, we want to maintain a three percent reversion from departments. And um we're looking to also next week bring uh consideration for the board to consider not adding anything to the twenty five approved budget through new positions, uh, new requests that hit the general fund reclasses, et cetera. Twenty six, we have a twenty five percent adjustment we have to look at. That's what we're working with departments as we speak and offices of thirty seven million. And that's absent any new revenue. So we're not forgetting those conversations. We're doing those in parallel track. And then in twenty seven, if revenue doesn't significantly change, then there would be an additional nine percent that we have to consider. Our desire would be to try to focus on twenty twenty six and track the revenue into twenty into twenty twenty six. Um, so that if some of the revenue that the board has initiated takes effect, and if the economy picks back up, it will lessen the impact of the twenty twenty seven implications. So things for consideration. Next week, we'd we'd like the board to consider a motion to suspend fiscal year twenty twenty five requests for general fund additions, positions or reclasses that have additional general fund expenditure impact that have not already been budgeted for. Um, we have provided targets to departments and offices. We'll be looking to schedule time with the board and office and departments to come and talk about impacts of reductions. There are significant reduction exercises that we're going through. Those conversations will be detailed. And then here's a bit of a high level tentative schedule. Maybe somebody can walk us through that.
Sure. So um this week, on our short week, we sent out the targets um last night after the presentation. Um, we have requested that the proposals for reduction come back to the Budget Office um by end of day on the tenth. That's Wednesday next week. Um, we're hoping to schedule the uh reduction presentations and conversations with the board following Wednesday on the seventeenth of September. We do, um, we did shift the budget calendar um as much as I could to the right. So the first review of the biennial budget will be um October first. Second review uh with final preliminary decisions on October fifteenth. We need to then publish um the budget, proposed budget, and then provide two week public notice uh around November thirteenth for a public hearing on December second and final deliberations on the third. Um, we would have budget adoption on the sixteenth. There's a couple of other things like budget certification. I believe it's on the ninth of December. But these are the the big days for leading up to budget adoption.
Thank you. Nice.
Yeah.
So for the uh seventeenth, just I know that some um we had planned to go to the connections tour, so we're going to be rescheduling that um that way. Um, this is more important, so um not more important, but it's it's an important thing that we really need to get accomplished, so.
So Chair, we'll probably look and work with the clerk to have a afternoon session on the seventeenth from about one to four o'clock. In addition to the one that's already scheduled in the morning. It'd be really just reconstit- reestablishing the um meeting that was. Commissioner check in. Yeah, we we know that these are significant impacts. Um, what I will say with the entire organization is working through this right now, and it's a significant amount of work. Our departments and our offices in looking at the um impacts and working in partnership. We what we've asked them to do is to help us quantify what the reduction exercise means to loss of service and impacts to to service so that the board can understand what that will mean for the residents of our county. Um, and so we know that the offices are very interested in coming to have those individual conversations. We'll we'll be working to schedule. Um, it will be a little tricky, because as I've been made aware, there are some folks that already have travel plans scheduled, so we're gonna try to maybe look at a couple slots on the sixteenth for those that will be out of office on the seventeenth for prearranged travel, especially one of the offices um uh that really would like to come and talk to the board. And then how do we schedule the rest for um with our departments and our assistant county managers working through? This is already a busy time of the year with budget. Uh, when we add on top of that, the work that we're having to do with reduction exercises, it just adds a level of complication. So a a significant appreciation work that has already gone into where we're at today, but the work that will take place for the next couple of weeks um to our county leadership and fiscal staff. Uh, I just want to express that. So that's our plan and how we we want to move things forward. Uh, and then we will see if there are any questions from the board.
Thank you. I guess I um, you know, since uh, no, we don't have a board, I I would like to give some consideration to maybe an action for next week. Um, because I you know, as we're hearing all about this, I I'm thinking about like the Commissioner's office and thinking about the vacancies that we currently have, right? I I would like to consider something either next week or or something that we're we can pause hiring on um some of our vacancies in the Commissioner's offices office until um and have a county manager bring us a proposal on what our commissioner's budget is going to look like. Um, because then at least we can have um, you know, an idea on whether we need to move forward with some positions or not. Um, and we can have I don't know, just that conversation. So um not asking the board, I just I'm not sure if it can be added to the calendar next week uh for that action to be given consideration. Um, and and for us to have to have that discussion, because I think we also need to start thinking about our own budget in the Commissioner's office as well.
Yeah, and that's a great point, Commissioner, because we, the Commissioner's office has also given issued a target. And so we'll be working that through and having conversations with Commissioner about what that means to our office. So we will add that for consideration for our Tuesday conversation.
Other questions on budget topics? Commissioner Fornier has joined us. Um, okay, and we'll go on to the next item. She's external boards and commissions and your reports from commissioners on external boards. Called generally. Make sure items. Okay, and the agenda.